2021 to order the planning and zoning and meeting. Can you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
There.
Mary Scott. Absent Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Yeah.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to sit the alternate members for the remainder of the meeting for the two absent members. And next, can I get an approval of the minutes of January 28, 2021?
So moved. Oh, second.
Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner Higley. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, to approve?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Seeing none is unanimous. Next would be the attorney's report. Do we have?
Uh, no, we do not have a town attorney report in this packet. I don't believe.
Okay, thank you, Jen. And now moving on to the public participation. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak about any matters in town that are currently not on our agenda? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Okay, seeing none. Somebody has a TV or something going on in their background? No more. Thank you. No, it's there. Okay, do we have any bond releases this evening?
No bond releases.
No bond releases. Okay, we're moving right along. Continued public hearings. I see none.
Nope.
Okay, new public hearings, public hearing 2992, Eight Lake Drive.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on February 11th, 2021 concerning public hearing 2992, Eight Lake Drive, special permit and site plan review application for the expansion of a nonconforming house to accommodate a 1,375 square foot home, new addition, Elizabeth Benito, owner applicant, map 93 lot 10, R33 zone, Crescent Lake overlay district. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Francis Alamo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Yeah.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay, is there anyone for the applicant here? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. This is Jay Ursery with JR Russo and Associates here representing the applicant Liz Benignato. And as the legal notice stated, this is an application for a special permit for an expansion of a house or an addition to a house that's out on Eight Lake Drive. So that said, let me see if I can share my screen with you so we can get a plan up and we can all look at it and we can walk through it together. So just bear with me here for a second.
No problem. Thanks, Jay.
All right, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it's a good thing I have a young son here who knows a little bit more about this technical stuff than I do. It's a lot easier to roll out a set of plans on a desk than to do this, I gotta be honest, but we're surviving COVID. So this is a survey that that we did for Liz out on on Lake Drive. And there's actually two things going on here. If you look at the plan, it's labeled as lot line reconfiguration and special permit for the expansion of the structure, which is the nonconforming use. And what's happening is Liz was able to acquire some property from her neighbor, the Quails over here on the right side as we're looking at it from the street, and that was the reconfiguration portion of the application which was approved by your staff in the zoning office, which gave her a little bit more room in order to accomplish this. And then the special permit section is to allow the addition, which is this hatched area. The existing house is located right here in the front, and it's kind of an L-shaped affair, if you will. It's according to your GIS records was built in 1900, so it's very old. It's a little over 700 square feet. It's quite small. And and Liz has a family member with her who is handicapped. The small house obviously is not conducive to the accessibility that someone would need in a wheelchair and so forth. So this addition is an addition that will be an addition that's handicap accessible. And what it involves is removing an existing detached garage, adding an addition to the rear, which is consists of a bedroom, a handicap kitchen area, a crate room or family room, if you will, and then exit out the back and some storage area and our garage that's located up here in the front. So in terms of looking at it, you know, we talk about nonconformities, obviously, this was built long before existing house at its closest point to the left-hand property line is 2.7 feet away. The addition here at the back left corner is 4.2 feet, so we're not increasing the nonconformity in terms of the side yard. The front is just a little bit, let me just blow this up a little bit, we're about 19 feet from the left front corner of the house to the front property line. The new garage addition is 27.6 feet back, so the when the existing detached is removed, the new garage addition is actually further back than what the detached was and further back than the left front corner. So there's no increase in nonconformity there, nor is there any increase in nonconformity on the side. It meets the requirements in terms of building coverage on the lot. We've added some square footage, so we're okay in that respect. And and as I said, it's it allows Liz to better take care of water and water. There's no septic here out in the lake, as you know. That's a basic overview. I think Jen put together a very nice memo for you that pretty much explains the application. And and it's fairly simple. I know you've seen a number of these over the last years. I think the last one we did was for Danny Spazarini where he put on a garage addition and a mudroom that was a similar situation that encroached into, I think, the front setback requirement, if I remember correctly. And and it came into you under this same scenario and special permit application. So this one is is similar. So that said, that's a basic overview of what Ms. Benignato is looking to do. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Good. Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Suzak.
Mr. Chair, I just have one question. In terms of on the north side, where, you know, the new house is, you know, 4.2 feet away from the property line, how close is the adjacent house from the property line?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. We didn't locate the adjacent house. There's a garage I know that's right up close up front here that's on the adjacent property. I think the house is a little further away. And I know Liz has talked to her neighbor on the left side and they're aware of what she's doing. And and I don't believe they had any issue with with what we're proposing here.
All right. Well, again, you know, hopefully that that wasn't the direction I was going, and I'm not sure if we're going to get any public participation or not, but I just wanted to make sure that the neighbor who's, you know, to the north, what is aware of what is happening.
I think Liz is on the on the meeting here. I saw her name come up. Maybe Liz, if you're there, if you just want to comment.
Yes, may I speak?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I have spoken with both my neighbors. And on the north side, there is the Zip family bunny and Bill, and they're in favor of it. Their house is actually probably a good 30 yards from that line away. And as Jay mentioned, probably over here, maybe 20 yards is a garage right on where it says the words existing. Yeah, up in that corner there.
Garage is up front, close to the road.
It's an unattached, very close to the road garage. So we're not infringing on them by any means, and they are in favor. I've already sent me a text saying, yeah, we see the sign.
All right, thank you.
Will house a also the a handicap bathroom. On the first, everything first floor.
All set, Rich?
Yes, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah, I do have a question, and it's to the staff. Jen, wouldn't this be a variance and not a special permit? I don't understand. They're within the 20%. They've purchased the land. Why wouldn't they be getting going to ZBA for variance as opposed to coming to us? Could you help me out with that?
Uh, yeah, so the um the coverage they're fine on, but the this, since they're expanding the building without further encroaching on the existing side like side setbacks, then it would be an expansion of a nonconforming structure under section, I think it's four, three, or yeah, three?
Actually, Jay Ursery, for the record, I don't mean to to interrupt, but it and and hopefully this maybe answers your question, Linda. And in your regulations, there's a section and it's 3 dot 4 dot 1D that says, and I'm just going to quote it, we put it right on here because, you know, initially, when we got involved with some of these years back, I asked the same question that you just asked, but your regulations actually take this into consideration, and they have a specific section that speaks to it. And it says, the commission may hold a public hearing and review a special permit application for the expansion of existing nonconforming use to extend or enlarge a nonconforming building. The commission may approve such permit if it finds that the proposal is consistent with the goals of the POCD and is in harmony with the neighboring uses and not detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent properties. And it also does reference the other section that that Jen just spoke about, which is expansion of nonconforming structures. So basically, what it says is, if you're not making it more nonconforming than it already is, in other words, encroaching closer to the side or closer to the street, that this section under a special permit application allows you to look at it and make a decision to allow an expansion. And as I had said, in this particular case, the closest portion of the existing building is only 2.7 feet from the property line. And our proposed addition is a little over four feet away from the property line on the left-hand side as we look at it. Hopefully, that answers your question.
I just was thinking it would better served at the ZBA so that they could do a variance, because from my understanding, variances can be very specific to exact sizes. And but that's okay. No, I just don't want to be, I want to stay in my lane as as we've been told. So that's all.
No, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I think what happened here in Enfield, and I'm going to go back a ways and maybe Ken, you know, is is a little familiar with it, but years ago, when Enfield was developed, and we go back to Ledger Star, there was a what they called an R17 zone, which was a 35-foot front yard, which this has, and 10-foot side yards, and it had a 35-foot rear yard, and the and the requirement for size was 17,000 square feet, the R17, and I'm going to say 80% of that zone was the town of Enfield for the residential development areas. And in the 80s, it was changed, and I think that's when this regulation came into play because it created literally a probably thousands of lots that all of a sudden became nonconforming. And when anybody wanted to do any kind of an expansion, they ran into this situation where we can't expand because now we're in the R33 or the R44, and they were built under the R17. And I think that's when the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission came up with this regulation to help alleviate that situation and not having literally probably hundreds of applications going before the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, thank you for giving me that information. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, I just going along with what Jay was just saying. You know, 30.40.2 nonconformant structure may be expanded, altered, or expanded, providing such expansion alteration or extension does not violate or further violate any of the height, bulk, or setback. So just because the existing house is nonconforming, it doesn't include the entire property line all the way from the road all the way back. It's just for the existing structure that's there. That's the way I read the regulations. But I do agree with you, Jay, that 30 or 3.40.1D gives us the the okay to hold a public hearing and see if it will work in this situation. So my concern, my only concern on this would be the neighbor to the left. By chance, would the neighbor to the left be here this evening? Jay?
They are not, not that I'm aware of, but as Ms. Benignano stated earlier, that she has spoken with them. They have no issue with this and are in favor of what she's trying to do here.
Right. And I think.
It's Lori.
Yeah.
I just, I can't share my screen and I can't raise my hand. But I just looked it up on the GIS and the neighboring house to the left of this, I'm not going to say north or south, but left of this diagram is about 45 feet from the property line by scaling it on GIS, and it's set back almost as far, if not further than this proposed house.
Right. Okay, thank you, Lori. So due to the nature of why they want to do the addition, the extent they went by purchasing the land to the right to make this work. Yeah, I'm good with the public hearing, and that's what our regulation says we can have. And I would feel that if the neighbor was upset about this, they have a right to come to the public challenge this. So the neighbor not being here, and they could call in at any time or zoom into this meeting if they're watching. If they speak in favor or against it, that's their right, and that's the reason we have the public hearings for something like this. So that's all. I just, I agree with you, Jay, and I'm kind of helping answering why it's not at ZBA and it's at us. So any other commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Seeing none, seeing none. At this time, I would what the at this time, I would like to open it up to the public. Anybody who would like to speak in favor or against public hearing PH 2992, Eight Lake Drive addition, please speak up and state your name and address for the record. Going for the first time. Going for the second time, public hearing 2992, Eight Lake Drive, special permit for an addition. And going for the third time. Seeing none, how would the commission like to proceed?
Make a motion. We close the public hearing?
Second.
Mick?
Motion's made and seconded. Roll call, please. Jay, can I get you to drop your map, please, so I can see the commission? Thank you.
Ken Nelson.
For this is for closing the public hearing. For.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Vinnie?
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
John Petronella.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
All in favor, none against. Okay, how would the commission like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for public hearing 2992, dated January, I mean, February 11th, as prepared by the Planning Department with the 25 conditions listed and the specific conditions, you know, identified.
Okay, motions made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I am going to support this motion. It is not a long roadway. It is abutting another private property that is quite a distance away. I think they've done due diligence in their hardship to try to rectify this situation, so I will be supporting this. Any other comments before we vote? Roll call.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo. Four. And Richard Suzak is four.
All in favor, none against. Congratulations and good luck. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No problem. Moving on to old business, site plan review SPR 1846, 710, 718, Enfield Street. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, Daniel McKellick from Bacon Wilson, 33 State Street, Springfield, Massachusetts, office this week.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. We also have Bob. Do you want to go?
Bob Corba, representing both the buyer and the seller on the sale of the property to Bartol Express Inc.
Hey, welcome, Bob. Anyone else?
And Jay Ursery, JR Russo here, representing the applicant.
Welcome back, Jay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I see we received the plans late this evening. Has the commission had a chance to review it?
No.
Yes. Yes, I did.
Okay. So Dan, why don't you go ahead, or Jay, whichever one, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about what you've changed with the comments that you received from the last meeting?
Yep, and and I apologize for the late submission. It took us a little while. We had to go out and do some field work and put it all together. But we've felt that we, we believe we addressed your concerns. So let me make an attempt to share a screen here again with you. And can everybody see that?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask everybody, mute, please mute yourselves? There's getting to be a lot of background noise. Thank you.
We've actually added some sheets to the plan set here and, you know, based on some of the comments we heard at the last meeting. But let me just show you, this is an existing conditions, what we're calling demolition plan. And and one of the things that we're doing here is showing areas that are going to be pavement, blacktop, concrete will be removed to allow some improvements, one of them being the ramp that we talked about coming off the south side of the building. And again, on the front side, on the Enfield Street side of the larger building, the garage building, because you had some concerns there as well. And so this area that, and if you could see my cursor, let me just blow this up a little bit more. Bear with me here. In the front here, right now, there's, there's some areas that are gravel, there's some concrete, and there is some bituminous. And and it's, it's basically all beat up, and the reason is that the the old underground tanks had been removed a few years back, and the remediation for that was done. So they ripped out what was there, pulled the tanks out, and did that work and got, you know, their approvals and okays from from deep. But and then they just left it that way. So we're essentially going to take out everything from the front of the building down to the back of the existing sidewalk, out to the edge of Carpet Street and back over the front. Because we're going to redo this whole front area, and I'm going to show you that in a minute. In the back here, to accommodate the ramp, this area, which is a saw cut line, the bituminous that's here will all be removed, and there's going to be some repaving and some improvements done there, which I'm going to show you again as well. So let me go to the next sheet here. And let's, let's start in the front. So some of the things that we had talked about with you at the last meeting concerned the aesthetics of the building, whether or not there would be any parking located in front of the building, and should it be designated as a fire lane? And how are we going to handle that and so on and so forth? So what we've done here in the front is, you know, we're going to remove everything out to the walk. We're going to repave the area here, which gets us access to the overhead doors that are in the front of the building. And then over in the, let's call it the northerly section of the front, we're going to install a new concrete sidewalk, five feet wide. We're going to tie that into the existing sidewalk on Carpet Street that's here, and then extend it out to Enfield Street, Route 5, and tie it into the existing walk right here. So we will now have a continuous walk coming from Enfield Street. We can then go down Carpet Street and continue down, and it's all put together. Before, this was kind of a mishmash of bituminous, concrete, the old gas island, I think, was there from the pumps years ago. But we're going to take that all out. The area that's shown as crosshatch here is going to be topsoiled and seeded. That's going to be lawn. And then in front of the sidewalk that's here, we've got a four-foot-wide plant bed. And within that plant bed, we're going to put three hydrangeas, one on either end and one in the center. And then between those, we've got knockout roses, and those are actually a petite knockout. They get up to about 18 inches or so. I expect red, I suppose, that the owner could do something different in color or mix them if they want to. They're continual blooming rose that bloom all summer long, right into the fall. I don't know if any of you have them at your house. I have some at my house, and I was pretty impressed with them. They're nice. They don't need a lot of maintenance. So three hydrangeas and knockouts in the front. Now, you'll also note that I've got these, these circles here labeled as peas. And what those are actually are planters. So again, along the front of the building here where the overhead doors are, we're going to put in some planters. And I've got two located on the main building, one here, one here. Another one over here in front of the smaller building here, here, one on the side and one on the back corner. Those are concrete planters. They're 36 inches in diameter, they're 30 inches high. They're very beefy, I guess I might say. And let me go to the next sheet. And I've got a detail here of that. This is out of a catalog that supplies essentially different types of things for parks and municipalities. essentially different types of things for parks and municipalities, and this is a concrete planter. It's quite large. Probably weighs 300 or 400 pounds, so nobody's gonna walk away with them. And they're also rather expensive, but we don't need to go into that here right now, but we're showing those again in the front, so we'll have some flowers here, flowers here, 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 and here. Now, to address the, the issue with regard to parking in front of the buildings, we had talked about fire lane and striping, and it could probably be striped. Although I think aesthetically, striping the front of both the buildings probably wouldn't look that great, so we're, what we're doing is we're proposing signage that'll be attached to the front of the building. We've got one here. We've got one here, and we've got another one over here, and those will be indicating fire lane, no parking. So that we don't have vehicles parked in front of the building, and, and if there were a situation where it became an issue, at least you have the ability to police it, or the police department has the ability to police it, because it's it's designated as a no parking area, so we're gonna add those to the front of the building. So, we're hopeful that that addresses the front area in terms of making it a little more aesthetically pleasing compared to what's there now, and that's what the, you know, the prospective buyer wants to do. They do wanna make it look a little better, it's as one of the commissioners said, I think maybe Commissioner Alamo indicated that, you know, in its day, it was probably a decent-looking place, but it's kinda gone into disrepair. So, so we've added that. In terms of the rest of it, there was, it was difficult going back and forth from one plan to another, looking at floor plans, and so we've essentially gratted and added the floor plan right on this sheet, so it's a little easier to see. And, and what that involves essentially is on this building, two overhead doors back here that are gonna be eliminated. New overhead door here, the new overhead door over here, new man door, and this is the ramp. And the ramp comes down from the existing floor elevation, grades down. All of this area within here, in the sawcut area, is all gonna be repaved so that we can make the grade work, to make the ramp work. And then the areas there that have this shading or hatching, again, that's the area where we have to remove the blacktop to make this work, but it doesn't make any sense really to put the blacktop back in there, because nobody's gonna park there, nobody's gonna use it for storage, so we're gonna landscape it, and we're gonna put in some river rock on a weed-control fabric and, and put that back in, in this area up against the building, over here against the building, down the backside of the existing house and office building over here, and a little bit over here, and then again, we've got the two planters that are located here, so it'll reduce the impervious coverage a little bit. I think it's gonna look a little nicer than having the blacktop up against the building. And, and I think it may have been Commissioner Suzak who was concerned about how we might grade this and where the water's gonna go. Essentially, right now, there's a break point here on the side between the two buildings. We've got water coming forward. Will continue, and then there is a little bit of water that comes here and goes around the back, and everything here goes out over into the left rear corner, and it's gonna continue to do that the way we've graded it, so we're not changing, we're not doing anything that's gonna change or alter drainage patterns or create a situation where we're damming water, and it's not gonna be able to get out. So, and that was a good question with regard to the ramp. We hadn't done anything specifically in terms of designing it, but but it will work, but it requires a little pavement removal and some regrading in the back of the building and the house in terms of getting this, this ramp to work, to get, to allow the employees to get vehicles in and out of the building, so we think we've addressed that hopefully satisfactorily for you. One of the other things that, that was talked about and came up, I think at the last meeting, was with regard to floor drains. And, and there are some floor drains in the building. So, Bob Corvo actually did a lot of legwork here, and he got ahold of Dan Perici down at the WPCA and talked to him. And Dan had some records that went back, I think, maybe to the 90s. I don't remember exactly, but where Matt Purcellow had actually applied to the town to install floor drains and install an oil-water separator. And he got an approval from the town through WPCA and through Public Works. At the time, Jack Kesmarski was the Public Works Director. Some of you probably remember him, and he signed off on it. We got copies of all that. And the floor drains are there, but what we didn't find was we can't find an oil-water separator. We don't think it was ever installed, and I think it may have been Ken, you may have been the one that brought this up. I don't remember exactly, but so we did some more investigative work, and in fact, Dan Perici and, and Bob Corvo were out there again today. And what they did find is that the separator was never installed, but the drains themselves actually had been concreted up. And, but didn't do a great job, so they, they were tried, what they did is they tried to alleviate them, which is what we're gonna do. We're gonna eliminate the floor drains. We're gonna concrete them up. They will no longer be functional. The buyer doesn't think that he needs them. There are other alternative methods for, you know, cleaning their floor and doing what they have to do, so we're gonna eliminate the floor drains that are there, which somebody already did to some extent. And that hopefully puts, that puts that issue to bed, and, and we, we don't have to go down that road in terms of installing a separator. Dan did provide us with some information in terms of where the sewer comes in. There is a sewer line comes in and takes care of the building, comes off of Carpet Street, it's located right here. And the other one on the front building, we already knew that one was located over here, so Dan had some old records that went back to the, I don't know, 60s or 70s, I think, that were very helpful in determining where these things were located, so hopefully that, that it takes care of that issue for you, gives you the comfort level in terms of whether there were floor drains and there are, and whether there's a separator, there's not, but the floor drains essentially are gonna be abandoned in place and concreted up, so they're no longer functional at all. So, I think I wanna say that that hopefully covers what we had talked about at the last meeting, and it's likely I forgot something, but we did add some details. Again, we've got the concrete planter here, we've got a shrub planting detail. We've got a sidewalk detail so that the owners know what they need to do in terms of making these improvements to the property. We didn't lose any parking spaces. Everything still seems to work. One thing I did add, though, is, is let me point this out, is in terms of parking, we have some inside the building. And there's one here, one here, and we designated those as employee parking spots, because that's who's gonna be using them, so we've got that on here on the plan. And then the one over in the corner here, I designated as an employee spot, so we've got three employees that are gonna work in the garage facility. Those are their three spots. And the one that's in the front right here through this bay door is a customer car waiting for service that'll be inside, determine what it needs, and it'll sit there and wait, should that spot be needed, to be able to go in and get serviced in one of the service bays when it becomes available. So, we've made some designations in terms of who parks where within the building, so I, hopefully that makes it a little clearer and and, and makes it a little more comfortable for you in terms of looking at this and how this is gonna function, so that said, I think that covers the questions we had at the mat in the last meeting, so at this point, if Dan or Bob don't have any more to add, I guess we could entertain some questions. You're on mute, Ken.
Sorry. I have a few questions. The left rear of the property, I can't see on the map. Who owns that property? Where all the water's gonna be draining?
All right, hold on a second.
I think it's Jay Delo.
JPD Enterprises or Properties LLC. I don't know who that is. He owns everything on the south side, and he also owns everything on the west side, including the residential, so he's our only a butter here. There's a commercial building in the back over here. The driveway comes down the side and goes into that. And, right now, and, and I'm gonna say for decades in the past, the water from this area runs overland and runs through or under the fence and, and goes into that property. And it always, it, it has. I don't think anything's changed here for quite some time. We will be making a slight reduction in the impervious coverage here by adding in the river rock in this location, so there will be maybe a little less water going there when we're done, but again, we're not changing any of the drainage patterns. That's, that's how it is today, and, and that's how it's been for quite some time.
Right, I, I understand that, but my concern is there were floor drains in this building, and I used to own a garage years ago, and we used chemicals to clean the grease and oil off of the floor. When they wash the floor down, that water is gonna flow out with all the grease and everything, and it's gonna run onto the butter's property. How do you prevent that?
Can I speak to that, Jay?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
The EPA has, has certain guidelines in running what's called a dry garage. And what you do is you use a minimum amount of water for cleanup, use spill pans, et cetera. And according to Dan Perici, the Firestone, not Firestone, the Sears Garage over near the mall.
Yep.
They had no floor drains. They had a vacuum system. And, and if you clean up with that or mop it up, then the EPA directs that you have to have containers, bio containers that are sealable, so that all chemicals that are actually pulled up are squeezed out, put into these containers. Then you have to have a recycling company come in, or a company that picks up contaminant materials. And there has to be an actual chain of, of custody on that. Just as you would when somebody picked up your, if you had the oil tanks, the waste oil tanks in the ground.
Yeah, so who monitors that? Would that be the WPC?
It would have to be the, the owner, obviously. There would be records that I suppose you could direct the WC PCA to come in and do it. I don't know who oversaw Sears. I know Dan Perici talked about it, so he was aware of what was going on there. But according to Jay, most of your garages today do not have floor drains. The other thing that Jay, Dan Perici discovered today, pointed out to me, that all of the all of the drainage is going towards the old floor drains, so nothing would be leaking out of the building. So, you're not gonna be washing the floor as you'd be in violation. And then pushing it out into the into the driveways or what have you. It's all gonna stay within the building. The other EPA recommendation is using very little fluid at all on the cleanups.
Okay, are you all set?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Next is, what type of repairs are gonna be done in this facility?
Primarily, as I understand it, just, just regular automotive repair, brake jobs.
Tires.
Tires.
Tires, your standard automotive repair. There will be no auto body work, though.
No auto body work?
Not at all. Unproposed.
And then and do, are, do you recollect when an automotive dealer's license was put in place on this property?
The, hang on one second. Zoning enforcement officer, I believe, has records that date back to 1957, sorry, 55. As far back as 1955, and a used car license through the Connecticut DMV as recently as 5/23/18.
So, you're saying they had a dealer's license all through the 60s and 70s?
They had, they had used, they had car sales. I don't know if you, if required at the time in 1957, if you had to have a specific car sale certificate, and what exactly that had.
Right, because I know, I know they had repairs forever. And, and then the towing started later, and then the sales started when they acquired the property across the street. And I know somebody had mentioned that, you know, he just stored cars over there. That is not the case. He had cars for sale there for years. And that's what he basically used as his sales lot to showcase the cars, and very few cars were ever put up for sale in this property. So, you know, again, my concern is he had property on Carpet Street that he used for employee parking, and he had the huge lot across the street to make the use work that was currently on the property. Okay, that's all I have for now. Commissioner DeGray.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. You've got two lots, two separate lots, and I don't say anywhere where you're going for your snow to be piled. And you said you were gonna be doing brake changes and things like that. Don't you, aren't, aren't you required to have like a separate dumpster for things like that? For metal? One for trash, obviously, and one for cardboard? I'm, I'm talking, I don't know. So, and then you're talking about used tires. Where would they be stored? I don't know if you need a dumpster for that. I don't know. So, and I see your little square for the dumpster, and that looks like just a, you know, a small dumpster. Plus, you have people renting, so they'll be throwing their trash in it, so that's one of the things. And during the previous meeting, you said that you wanted to be able to drive through the building so the cars wouldn't have to back out toward Enfield Street. But isn't there a wall between the front and the back? Is that just like a I don't know if it's a structural wall or weight-bearing wall. I don't know what it is, if that's gonna be removed, so that the cars could drive through the building and go out. So, I'm looking at your new plan. I'm very happy that you're putting landscaping in. That's very exciting to me, so I, I just have some some of those questions.
I think with the pass-through piece, you know, the garage door that would be put in, and well, the ones that would be taken out would be replaced with similar block wall that's there, you know, exactly the same thing, painted the same color with a fresh coat.
No, no, I, I understand the pass-through door, but from the front of the building on Enfield Street to look to the back of the property, there is a wall that separates the front, so if I were bringing my car in, and you were gonna put it on a lift, I'd have to kind of drive through your wall to get to the back to put it on a back lift. If you already have cars on the front lift.
There's
There's a wall that separates the front and the back of the building.
Midway through the building, if you come in from the Carpet Street entrance, and you come over, there's a solid black line that's straight there. That would be a new door that would be put in. Thank you.
Yes, I know that, sir. Yes.
And they can drive through, and that's how they would access those, those
And I believe she was talking about, excuse me?
In the front.
Right where the, this, the, the cursor is right now, there's a wall.
Right, they wouldn't be driving through that wall. There's a lift there that they can use.
Dan, excuse me? To the, if you look, there, there's an opening to the left of that wall, and where there's a little cutout there, whatever's there is gonna be removed, and there's plenty of room. There's plenty of room to drive through there.
All right, that, that was a question. Okay, that's not a problem, but I'm concerned about the snow, where you're gonna push that during the winter, since we're having a great winter of snow. And the dumpsters.
I, I think I can address the snow issue, although, to be honest, I don't know what they've done over the decades with their snow there. My guess would be that they probably hauled some of it away, but one of the things that we've done here and it, is even though it's all paved, we're gonna show our striping, and we're leaving a fair amount of space here between the striped area and the back of the parking lot and the property line, which would be able to accommodate some of the snow to be able to push it here, as well on the side over here, and all the way down the side here, and as well on the side over here, to give them a little bit of ability to have some room to move some snow into that particular area.
to move some snow into that particular area. Uh, they also would have some room here in the front of the, uh, uh, small office building and some room over here on the lawn area in the front. So you know, during a, a more normal winter, which maybe is what we're having right now. I think they have enough room to deal with it if, or a bad winter like some we've had in the past. Which happened quite frankly at our office in East Windsor. They, they had to bring a loader and trucks in and haul snow away because there was not enough room for it. And, and I'm in an office that has, believe it or not, a lot of space, tons of space. But when you get a real bad winter in, in New England, they load snow with loaders and put it in trucks and they haul it away. And they would have to do that here as they do in, in many locations. And which I would assume they probably have done here in the past, to be honest.
Okay, and what about the dumpsters? I, I mean, it looks like you have maybe a, I don't know what size dumpster that you've got there, but.
The ten by twelve dumpster pad. Uh, so it accommodates a fairly good sized dumpster. Uh, I don't know what they've done here in the past over the years in terms of their trash and removal. My guess is, is that the apartments may have had the, you know, the rollout, big cans that a lot of us have. I, I think maybe that's what they get did there, but I don't know for sure. I don't know how they took care of the garage. I didn't see any evidence anywhere as I was over here over the last, you know, couple of months where it ever looked like there was a dumpster. I don't know that they ever had one, but we're at least providing space for one to go in, which I don't think they have now, and I don't know how they did it. They may have had a dumpster in the building. That's possible. I don't know the answer to that question, but we are providing space for a dumpster outside.
Thank you.
Well said. Commissioner DeGray?
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Alimo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, for the chair to attorney Mick, half your, Daniel?
Yes.
Hi. So, um, I think what you described as the nineteen fifty-eight, um, car approvals from the Connecticut Motor Vehicles. Um, I'm, I'm seeing one here for used cars and one here for new cars. And it, then I'm seeing the, um, ZBA approval as well. So we're, we're still have two separate lots here. We're talking about seven, ten, eighteen Enfield Street, correct?
Correct.
Not combining these lots at all. Uh, so seven, ten, I would think is the main building, the big garage, because the numbers go up. Numbers go south on Enfield Street. And then a little building is seven eighteen, I'm thinking. Correct?
Yes.
So back, so back in the day, I, I can only assume that the Purcellows use seven, ten Enfield Street for their mailing address. Because these, um, sell cars. It says business at seven, ten Enfield Street, just so we're, we're sure what we're doing here. And the proposed two used car spots are actually at seven eighteen?
Correct.
So just maybe if you could clear that up, I just want to make sure. And I do see your, it was in our packet. I see what you described to the fifty-eight. And I was surprised. I never knew that, uh, Jimmy and Matt and then Tony sold cars, but obviously the father must have. Um, so just for this particular purpose of this project, these permits and, um, the ZBA approvals, how will they pertain if you, if I articulated that okay?
Oh, that's perfectly fine. Um, and, and you did a great job and thank you for the question. Um, the used car sales, um, it, our understanding is they date back to the parcel. Now, I don't know if the, you know, what the specific address was on the, on the, on the tickets handy. Um, because I don't have that file right in front of me after I received the letter from the zoning enforcement officer confirming that this is a, um, non-conforming use, pre-existing, uh, for both seven, ten and seven eighteen. So when the automobiles, the you, it would be used automobiles, just to make sure that we're clear. Because the new, new sale of new cars is you have to have a, you know, a super lot, don't get.
Well, they actually have a permit for new cars.
They, they could, but, uh, we wouldn't qualify under a, a new car dealership and even to, even to buy one nowadays, you know?
Yep.
So, uh, but it's just that the intent is specifically used cars right over there, um, under the pre-existing non-conforming use that's tied to this property as determined by the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay, seven, ten. No, that's seven eighteen, Ken.
Seven, ten and seven eighteen is what the property designation was by the zoning enforcement officer.
No, Ken's right. The, a DMV thing says, uh, seven, ten Enfield Street.
That probably was their mailing address. My, my, Jenny, I was trying to, you know, clear.
Yeah.
Question.
The challenge is the motor vehicle.
Excuse me. I have a document from nineteen fifty-eight here that is what the attorney was talking about. I'm, so I, so that the main, this was the big bill in the garage. So that was probably their mail address. But these lots are, and again, I don't want to speak for the attorney. We're talking about both of these.
Both lots, correct.
Under this exercise we're doing tonight.
But there are two separate lots. So we would be approving seven eighteen to become a car lot, which is not now, seven, ten is.
Commissioner, um, we would not be approving that. It's already a pre-existing non-conforming use as determined by the zoning enforcement officer.
Can you show me a license with seven eighteen on it?
I can't, but the zoning officer, the one, I, I don't have it in hand, but the zoning officer is the proper authority to make the designation. We went through the town attorney. And we got the, you know, I, I believe there was an opinion circulated that the, that the ZEO is the appropriate person to make the determination. Um, and pursuant to that, we followed up with the ZEO and they have determined that it is a pre-existing non-conforming use relative to the parcel seven, ten hyphen seven eighteen.
So I, I'm looking at this because I, I know the history here very well. And I think to have it at seven eighteen, using seven, ten as their mailing address. I don't ever remember them guys selling cars, to be honest with you, but who knows? My memory could, I'm sixty-two years old now, so maybe I could be losing it a little bit, but I'm thinking that the Purcellows back then, intent was to sell the cars, if they did sell cars at seven eighteen, but seven, ten was their mailing address. I just want to get this cleared up in case there's any issues.
Right, but the license would show seven eighteen with a mailing address of seven, ten, like every other normal business. Corporate headquarters is seven, ten. The location of the sales lot is seven eighteen.
Again, I, I'm not bringing this up to try to mark the deal here. I just want to make sure.
If we produce a document that shows seven eighteen is a licensed or has been a licensed, uh, repair facility, sales lot, whatever, then yes, I would agree with the non-conforming use of that property. Seven, ten's not a question.
The, the issue of the use, I don't think is what is presented before the board. Lori, can you? Or Jennifer, can you correct me if I'm wrong to say that we're here based on a section eight point six zero review under the King Street, Enfield Street Design Overlay District only? As town council has advised, you contact the zoning enforcement officer to obtain a designation of a non-conforming use, which he's provided.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I? Yeah, so, so, um, Rick Rochelli did investigate this and it is my understanding and, and belief that both of these sites are legally non-conforming vested sites. Um, the applicant actually has been, um, very cooperative in, in, um, trying to appease this commission to make this more conforming, add landscaping, decrease impervious area. But right now, what your purview is, is under section eight point six oh. And basically you're supposed to be reviewing the, um, under the King Street, Enfield Street Design Overlay District. Uh, basically the design elements of the changes to the structure, the elevations. And, you know, most of the other requirements are actually, um, um, they, you know, they, this being a non-conforming site, there's no, there's no really great authority that we have to make them more conforming, even though they're doing it.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying. And if you can produce a document that says seven eighteen has been a licensed repair facility or car dealer lot, I agree with you a hundred percent. If it cannot be produced, they're asking us to blanket approve both lots. And really two separate properties, they're not merged together. Two separate properties should be two separate applications.
Well, I think that they're, that they're combined together just through history. Um, but, um, we're looking for the, um, email that we got from, uh, the zoning enforcement officer. So if anybody has any other questions, we'll try to find that.
Well, just find, find me a document from the DMV that shows they licensed seven eighteen.
I had, there's a, uh, CBA approval for seven eighteen here.
For parking.
Parking.
Parking and a fence.
Right, but what about a car dealership? That's what I'm asking about because their, their approval right now is to approve a car dealership on that property with two cars. And everybody's saying, well, you know, it could be, it should be, you know, maybe the mailing address. Show me a document from the DMV that, that licensed seven eighteen Enfield Street. Show me something from ZBA that licensed seven eighteen. Not seven, ten, seven eighteen.
But, but I brought that issue up because, you know, the attorney had pointed out these approvals from the state for car sales. And I only brought, I only brought that up because of the seven, ten address on it.
No, I, I understand that, Commissioner Alimo. You kind of backed up what I'm saying because everything to pertaining to the repairs or, um, sales was for seven, ten Enfield Street.
And, and again, so, and I did also say, knowing the history here, which I know, I know very well, I'm just saying, I'm, and I'm pretty sure I'm right, that that was the mailing address and their intent was to sell cars at seven eighteen. That I, I, because these documents have different addresses on them. And the attorney pointed out these approvals from Motor Vehicle, um, nineteen fifty-eight. Again, I, I just wanted to make sure that, I don't want to muck this all up either. I'm, I apologize, but we have to make sure it's done correctly.
Right, and we have to make sure we're not putting an approval on a property that's never been approved to sell cars in a non-conforming use. And, and all I'm saying is, since nineteen fifties, I mean, it should be simple enough to produce a document for seven, eighteen Enfield Street to prove that it was a car dealership. I mean, seven, ten has no problem producing them. So if they buy the property next to seven, ten or seven, eighteen, which I would assume is seven, twenty, does that automatically become a car dealership now? And then they work their way down the road or across the street? Doesn't work like that. Maybe if you merge the properties together, that's, that's all I'm saying. Uh, Commissioner Suzak?
Rich, um, yeah, I had to unmute myself and it was, I kept clicking around the thing. Because the, the only concern I have is, is that I, I guess the grading for that ramp and add, and I guess as it approaches the, I guess east side, um, towards the back of the house, you know, there, there's a, I guess an elevation of, you know, one oh five point seven and one oh six that sort of hits a, a chain link fence along the, the, the back of the apartment house. Close, when you're working towards parking, parking spot number one. So you, you're going to sort of grade that, you know, and again, I don't know what the, what the grade is once you get past that chain link fence, whether you had, would have to sort of modify your grades to, to accom- accommodate, you know, the water flowing out towards the front of the building, I guess is, is what you're really saying it is going to do at that point. So that, um, you know, it, it, it just seems like, you know, all of a sudden, you know, the gray line one oh six stops, you know, at, at that chain link fence, but I'm not sure what happens out the other side of a chain, chain link fence.
Yeah, uh, for the applicant, Jay Ursery with JR Roots. So, and, and I apologize, Rich. I may not have explained it clearly, but really what happens here is there's, there's a break right here between the two buildings where we've got water going to the back and, and the rest of it comes out towards the front, towards Enfield Street. And, and this water will continue to run to the back. This probably from about where it says oil tank location where that notation is. And if you look at the existing grades here and, and it's probably good you pointed this out because it was a little tricky, uh, to make sure we didn't disrupt the drainage pattern, but the ground elevation here, right at the corner of the fence is one oh six, one. The corner of the house itself is one oh five, eight. And you see the one oh six contour that runs through here. And, and now we're at one oh five, seven, so we're allowing this water to continue go in this direction, if you will, towards the, the left rear. The other corner of the house here in the back again is one oh five, seven, and we're one oh four, seven here. So this water can come away from the house and come back out into the parking lot, which it always did and continue on its way out. So, but that's a good question and it was tricky in here. We did look at that and shot some grades there to be sure that we weren't going to create a situation. And I, and I think you were the one that brought it up, you know, where's the water going to go? Are we going to dam the water? Are we going to create a pond or a pool? And we were concerned about that as well. So we looked at it very carefully to make sure that we didn't do that and it continued to flow as it currently does today. But good, good, good question and good observation.
All right. Yeah, yeah. Again, I, you know, now that you pointed out those elevations, it, it was difficult to figure out what they actually were referring to. But all right, as long as that, that is taken care of in that, that corner there. So, all right, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Jay, do you have the elevations going back to the left corner?
I do have them. I don't have them on here. I've got them on a worksheet that I could share with you, but it continues to drop off as we go to this corner where the cursor is.
Okay.
Uh, it, it all goes down in this direction and, and the water flows to that left rear corner over the top of the blacktop.
And you don't see a problem piling snow there in the winter where it's going to back up the water into the parking lot?
I don't think it's an issue. I think the water ends up going right under the snow. Um, and like I said, it's, we're not changing anything that's currently been done there over decades. And we're slightly reducing the amount of impervious coverage, so there'll be a little bit less water than, than what there was years back.
Oh, okay. And then on the front of the property, we, we've had a major problem throughout town. Your two islands that are currently blacktop. The King Street District, they're trying to do street trees and stuff like that. And what we're having and it's car dealerships because of lack of parking, they're putting their cars up on these islands and, you know, using them as like showcasing for, uh, traffic down route five. And there are no street trees on this property along route five. I believe the properties after it or before it heading towards the mass line all have street trees. What are the chances of pulling that blacktop out and putting some street trees up to prevent people from parking on those islands? Because that does follow the King Street Overlay District.
I would agree with you and, and I think it's a wonderful idea, uh, I would agree with you and and I think it's a wonderful idea, uh but you'll notice that I didn't show any landscaping up here other than grass. And the reason for that is it's in the state highway right away. We don't have any right to put anything in there other than grass. We can't put trees there, we can't put shrubs there. Um I don't know if it's possible to get one of those. The the adopta spots, if you will.
Right, I didn't think about that. What is the state right away thirty feet or something on both?
No, it's it's very wide here. It's probably, um it might be a hundred feet, I don't know, but the right away lines back here. And in fact, you know, back when the when the filling station was open, the pumps in the island were actually in the state highway, which is very common. I've run into it many areas. There's other areas in East Windsor. I had two other jobs we worked on years back in South Windsor. Same thing, the pumps were in the highway, they were actually out in the road. So when I first started looking at this and looking at landscape and I'm thinking to myself, well, we'll put some shrubs out here and then I'm looking at it, I go. I can't put any shrubs. I can't do anything out there. All I can do is plant grass. It's it's unfortunate. I agree with you. I think there's a lot that could be done to pretty it up, if you will, and. And improve the aesthetics substantially, but we have no right to do that.
Right, the problem is the state keeps expanding there right away. I mean, back when it was a horse and buggy trail.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Any other commissioners? Commissioner DeGray?
One more thing, um the office, all right, I I can't move uh the south. West corner is where the gas connection is. For safety purposes, I would like to see bollards put around that so that that just in case. Nobody hits it. They back up too quick, hit that bam, we lose a whole bunch of property. So I'd like to see bollards put around that gas um connection that's on on that corner. That was a concern to me about moving that uh bay door over. Was the the gas connection.
Again, Jay Ursery for the applicant. We can take a look at that and adding bollards is not an issue. I'm not sure, Linda, whether the. The actual meter is on the side or the backside of the building there, but we'll take a look and and it's a good point.
And I mean, that was, it was right on that wall, that south wall by the office, right on that corner. And it was like, oh, yeah.
We'll take a look and if it and if if necessary, uh adding some bollards around, that's a simple thing and and actually not an expensive thing. It's a good point.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else, commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Um, like I said, I would like to see any documentation, anything that has seven eighteen. As a registered uh dealer and repairs facility. So without that document, um at this point, I would ask that we table this until they can produce it. I'm okay to move on seven ten, but I'm not okay to move on seven eighteen.
Commissioner, may I speak to that point?
Sure.
Town Council has advised that due to the fact that there is a. Existing variance on record as an ancillary use for seven eighteen to seven ten that. Both parcels. Should fall under preexisting nonconforming use if they're designated so by the zone enforced zoning enforcement officer. And at that point, no site plan approval at all is required. And as Lori had pointed out earlier and Town Council has advised. We're here to review this for section eight point six zero, and I would respectfully request. That we review this for eight point six zero, maybe bifurcate the vote. So we can um make sure that we're satisfying what Town Council has. Has advised in the zoning enforcement officer to be sure that we're pursuing this the proper way. Um rather than um passing it along. The I mean, the reality of it is that the applicant, as as Lori said, doesn't really have to do a lot of this stuff because it's a preexisting. Nonconforming use.
But that's all I'm asking you to prove. Dean is preexisting nonconforming, and you keep mentioning the Town Council and. In this state, the Town Council has no bearing on planning and zoning, and a matter of fact, any influence from them. Is not a good thing, so I don't know why you keep bringing up the Town Council and why they're even involved in this parcel. All I'm asking for is a simple document. You're trying to do something on two separate properties. You have documentation to back up one. Just provide documentation to back up the other one. Because if he buys the building next door, are you going to say that this one's included too? Where does it stop? That's all I'm asking. Proof, prove that it is, and I'm all set. I I mean, I'm not asking for anything that's outrageous. If you want to include seven eighteen, show me the documents where it was included, because right now there is nothing.
We have a transaction that we're trying to close here and get squared away. We can take those two automotive spots on seven eighteen and move them over to the landscaping area. Is that uh? Is that okay? Because that's on seven ten. It's preexisting nonconforming use. There's no setback requirement. We'd end up with cars on the road, which is what we're trying to avoid. But we need to, we need to move this along, and I mean, maybe that's a viable option.
And and it goes back to what I said, when Purcellows had this running. You said preexisting nonconforming. It also included a lot on the other side of Carpet Street and a lot across the street on Route five. And that's how we pulled all this off for those licenses. You don't have them anymore, so you're not the same use. You're trying to do the same thing on a on half of the property, not even half of the property. I think the lot across the street was bigger than this entire property. But you keep you keep ignoring that and just brushing it off. Well, I don't know what he did. But then you turn around and say, well, it was that way, so we can do it. Well, if it was that way, it included other lots to fit the parking. I I mean, you you're you're trying to get both ways here and show me something on seven eighteen that it's an approved lot and I'm good to go. Because you are nonconforming. Seven ten also included a lot, like I said, and across the street, another lot. And that's how that got away with the parking. You don't have that anymore. And you don't have an explanation for it other than last meeting you said, well, I don't know what he did. That's not our problem. Well, that's what he did to get away with doing what he did, getting the parking requirements that he needed. Sure.
The parking requirements that he may have needed for his operation, I'm not sure what they would have been. I do not know what his operation was. Everything here that we're talking about with this nonconforming use is constitutionally protected rights under the state of Connecticut. And they run with the land, so it runs with the land specifically. So if you had another lot that's not involved in this transaction, I do not know what that lot was. I do not know what the use of that lot was. And I am not trying to incorporate the use of that lot. Right now, we have seven ten. Which obviously we have clearly identified is a nonconforming use for all of these purposes. The question has arose whether seven eighteen fits that same use. You've respect requested specific documentation to show that, even though we're not here. We can look into it, so my proposal is, is it okay if we we're going to move some spot, we'll move some car spots over on the seven ten? If that's what we're going to do, but we're we're holding up and it wouldn't continue on to the next parcel and the next parcel. Because those units, same thing, it runs with the land, so whatever the next parcel is over, if that was an automotive use today. Then yes, it would care that nonconforming use would run with that piece of property, however it's designated, however it's owned. I don't know. But the same thing, these these properties here, it's something that runs, it's inherent. It's a constitutionally protected right. Um so so people don't lose the value of their land and it rises to the level of a taking, and I know it's really old. But it's it's very well established, and we've tried to make sure that we navigate the 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 process correctly. My client has been more than happy to do all different kinds of things to dress up this property. And we have been told specifically, the only reason that we need site plan approval. Is for the changes under eight point six zero, because everything else, we don't have to put in eighteen parking spots. We don't have to paint them. We don't have to strike them. We don't have to do any of that. We don't have to do the landscaping. We don't have to do the plantings and everything, because the building is so stinking old that it falls outside of any existing zoning codes. And that's that's what we're told, and we're told by the one person who has the authority to make that decision. Which is the zoning enforcement officer. I don't know what else I'm supposed to do. I tried to make sure that I followed every single thing. Cross every T dot every I to make sure that we're all on the same spot and we're all comfortable. Because we're dealing with an old parcel, okay, that um obviously we have a a lot of different uses and and people weren't happy with the safety. And we said, fine, let's clean this thing up. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get a nice property that has a longstanding tie here. Back in good shape instead of a decrepit mess of broken up asphalt with some tenants that park all over the place, you know? And that's what we're trying to do.
And I agree with you, the nonconforming use is a constitutional right, providing you don't change anything in that use. And it has been changed. Part of the property was sold off. Part of the property that was used for this use was sold. So it's not the same parcel to you can't fit, you know, a ten thousand square foot warehouse, sell five thousand square feet of it and still call it a ten thousand square foot warehouse.
But was that land acquired back in nineteen twenty five? Did that land get acquired back in nineteen fifty six? Or was that land acquired by Matt Parcello in the nineties or two thousands when he. Um expanded into a toll lot and he got the variance and things like that. The issue doesn't, if I was trying to add a lot and I was trying to add ancillary parking to this. That would be a different story because I'd be expanding a nonconforming use. Decreasing a nonconforming use doesn't make a difference.
I agree, and that's why seven ten, you're right, it's constitutionally yours. But seven eighteen, all I'm asking for, and I'm not asking for you to throw in the towel on seven eighteen. Just produce a document from the DMV showing that that was a registered location, and that one also is grandfathered in for you.
Dan, can I speak to that? I, back in the eighties, I worked across the street at Cornerstone Realty. And Matt Purcellow bought the piece across the street that was the old Friendly's that you were referring to, uh where he had cars stored. Uh and that was, I think, nineteen eighty six. Prior to that, Matt sold cars. Specifically from these two properties, and there are pictures out there somewhere, and I've seen them where. The used cars actually parked right in front of seven eighteen.
Bob, I'm not, I'm not disputing that, but just because somebody did something doesn't make it legal. And he had been fighting with the police department for years and lawsuits back and forth because he was doing stuff illegal. And what you're asking us to do now is to do a blanket approval and include a separate property. That we have zero documentation to back up that it is nonconforming and grandfathered. I'm not talking seven ten, a hundred percent.
Let me ask.
Seven ten is beautiful.
Let let me ask a question then. One of our original plans, do you see where the employee parking is in number eighteen?
Number eighteen, uh inside the building?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, we had originally had a plan, and I've been in the building. We could actually move two used cars. Sales inside and display them inside the building in that space.
Seven ten, you're all set, Bob. You're all set. Take two, take two of the spots, take fourteen and fifteen. Move them over to where you're putting the two used cars and make that your sales lot in the back there or wherever you want on seven ten. Because seven ten can be approved, but what I'm saying is, I'm not asking or fighting seven eighteen. All I'm saying is just produce something to so we have something for records. To show, hey, our hands are tied, it's been that way since whenever, and we continued it. We have to follow the law. Which you're doing on seven ten. So i- if you want to, if you want to throw in the towel on seven eighteen, move the two spots fourteen and fifteen to where the two used cars are. And put the two used spots over there, limited to two used cars. Because you can park on seven eighteen because we're not approving any use there. We're not approving automotive repairs. We're not approving a dealership. You're parking there just like your tenants would. But you can't sell cars off of seven eighteen.
So you're saying move move them to fourteen and fifteen, one in the back?
Wherever you want. I I I just, I I'm not going to dictate where you put the spots. I just don't want to see them inside the building. How do you sell a used car? In a building after hours, people drive by with the internet. I I don't care where you put them, but just you've got to take the two used lots off of seven eighteen or two used spots and move them to seven ten. And just if you're, if you want, give up seven eighteen and we'll, I'll approve. I don't know what the rest of the commission will do. I'll agree on seven ten, because you're right, it's constitutionally protected. But seven eighteen, you have to give us something that shows that that also. Okay, has the same nonconforming use.
Okay, Dan wants to say something.
Go ahead, Dan.
Can we can we limit the approval to under eight point six zero? For both the the improvements made to both facilities that um. They're not creating creating any additional nonconformity with the King Street Enfield Street Overlay District. And then we can. From what I understand. Everybody will be happy if we produce some seven eighteen document, and if we can't produce some seventeen document. We're constitutionally protected under seven ten, so there's no site plan additional review that would be needed anyway. So if we just go under the eight point six zero, if you approve us for that, make a motion to approve us for that, that the additions to the. Changes to the building are not going to create any additional nonconformities under the King Street Enfield Street Overlay District. And then if for any reason we need to come back, we can take care of that at the next meeting, and if not, we just provide the proof for the file. Or we move the use to seven ten where we're constitutionally protected.
So you would have to remove because you're asking for an approval for a car dealership on seven eighteen. It's that's in your application.
Um I'm asking for approval. Under section eight point six zero tonight is what I'm asking for. Which is the King Street Enfield Street Overlay District and simply the renovations to the building that were not creating any additional nonconformity. As the.
Dan, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Uh I just spoke to to uh one of the bar tool partners, and he said he would readily accept. Only the used cars at the seven ten Enfield Street.
As as I think that, I think the issue is is moved. Because if we provide the documentation, then we have the constitutional protection, and we already have that under seven ten. So the issue just comes down to what we can produce, and we either have seven ten or seven eighteen or both, I guess I would say. Um and then we can just determine that, and we'll supplement the file and we'll we'll give everybody in town the heads up. On on what we find on seven eighteen. on, on what we find on seven-eighteen. But so we don't waste any commission's time. We're here for the eight point six zero approval. That is the primary purpose of this. We've made certain accommodations to try to display that we're not trying to, you know, we're trying to bring this more into conformity than less or, or, or keep it the same. And I think it's, uh, I think it's the appropriate way and the best use of everybody's time to get it approved that way as of today. And then we'll we'll give you an update.
Commissioner, Commissioner DeGray or Jenny, did you wanna speak?
I'm, I'm reading the, uh, motion for approval and it is only asking for a site plan reviewing the-
Commissioner DeGray. Jennifer had her hand up. Jen, did you wanna speak?
Um, yeah, so we did look into the history of this, um, property uh, when we were meeting with the, um, applicants before any applications were filed and we didn't actually have any record of there being an approval to use the properties, the other two satellite properties that you were referencing. Um, so, uh, we only had an approval record that showed seven-ten and seven-eighteen. Um, and from what I understand, back then, they showed seven-ten and Field Street as the address, but the plans showed both properties as just basically one approval. Um, I, I don't have the plans with me tonight, but, um, historically there was no designation on the site for any parking or striping of any kind. It was just kind of blank and approval and they were able to um, park everywhere all over. So, um, that was sort of the history of the site that we had in the files.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Alamo?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Like what the applicant has done here, I'm very happy to see that this building is gonna come back, um, as the gem at once was, um, again, uh, having a conflicting document in front of us. I did bring up the issue of the seven-ten, seven-eighteen. And I gotta believe back in the fifties that was their, that's where they were, that was their office. And I think, and I, I do wholeheartedly believe it was their mailing address and, um, the intent was to do the whole property. Again, I really support this. I just wanted to make sure that everything was on the record here correctly. Only because, you know, the document for the used car sales did address seven-ten specifically. But I have to believe that the intent in nineteen fifty-eight was, you know, eighteen as well. Cause they didn't hang around over at eighteen. Eighteen was just a rental property. They did all their business out of seven-ten. Um, and I know that for sure. Uh, so again, I just wanted to add to the record only because these approvals for used and new car sales were brought up. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of exactly what was set on these. They are approvals to sell cars, new and used. The address was seven-ten. I went to that place fifty-five, sixty years ago. They, they never hung around at seven-eighteen. They just rented it out. And, uh, seven-ten was their home. So again, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood. You know, the attorney did raise the issue that we have these documents before us. I just wanna make sure on the record that we know the addresses and, and how these documents are, are presented tonight. But I do believe that that was their, uh, billing, their, uh, mailing address. And again, I, I really think that the applicants did a great job here. I'm excited to see this happen. I hope I do support it. And I hope we could, uh, get everything straightened out. Maybe we can come back later and, uh, take a look at it with the zoning officer uh, relative to those two spots, uh, but I support this. And again, I just wanted to make sure the record was clear as to what these used and new car sales approvals were from nineteen fifty-eight. Thank you. All set.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
You know, I, I've been listening to the discussions and, and I, I believe that, you know, I could support, you know, this application, you know, with the approval first with section eight point six zero, the King Street, you know, Enfield Street Design Overlay District and that, you know, we don't necessarily, y- y- again, you know, if, if the, the conformity of the paperwork allows them to utilize, you know, um, seven-eighteen, then, then that would be fine too. But, you know, I think that, you know, we, we should you know, proceed with, you know, the, a vote as to whether, you know, they are, you know, m- making this property more conforming to the overlay district and, and looking at the improvements that they are making. I believe that, you know, they, it is a step in a, in a right direction in that it, it's not gonna be any, you know, more detrimental to the overlay district than, than it is now. It'll be obviously an improvement. So, um, in, in that vein, you know, if we just sort of concentrate on the section eight point six zero and allow the, the paperwork to follow at a later date, I, I would, you know, be fine with that.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Higley?
I got a little confused as to which commission does which thing with the automotive. And I was wondering if this has to go to zoning board of appeals, would they look into the fact that, that the paperwork is lacking for seven-eighteen or is that something that's just passed and nobody cares about it? I, I don't mean it the way it came out, but is this something that nobody has any control over and it'll go to zoning board of appeals and zoning board of appeals won't be able to ask for the paperwork?
Mr. Chairman, may I address that?
Sure.
Sorry. So, uh, when this goes to the zoning board of appeals, we will clarify the fact that this is the, that the nonconforming status is for both properties and Jen and I both believe that we've seen the plan that shows both properties, even though it might say seven-ten. I, I, we just didn't have the, um, actual file and the documents that, uh, Rick Rochelli has this evening, but, um, we, but, you know, we had a, a long conversation about the nonconforming status of the site. And so when it goes to to go, yep, their K-seven, we will make sure that that is clarified for the ZBA.
And if there's no history of actual approval uh, by the DMV for seven-eighteen, would they then have the authority to, uh, say, no, you can't have that?
Uh, they would have the authority to say that they couldn't have the dealer's license if, if in fact it was not permitted at that site.
Okay. Then I'm fine with it. Thank you for the explanation, Lori. I've been getting very confused as to what's going on.
We all have because things, things keep changing on that end. So we, we've all-
Yes. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So the King Street overlay, I understand. As far as seven-eighteen, the only document given to us was a document from ZBA from nineteen eighty-two for seven-eighteen, which allows accessory parking within nine feet of a residence boundaries within the premises located at seven-eighteen Enfield Street. Approval is subject to the following stipulations. A six-foot fence shall be constructed by the applicant to the north and northern boundary of subject parcel. Approval is all subject to compliance, all other respects with Enfield zoning ordinances. So I, I have no problem with them using seven-eighteen for park. Um, so when you go to ZBA, I hope they just heard what I read into the record. Maybe they can produce something. I do not see anything that includes seven-eighteen. How does the commission wanna proceed? This is from the King Street overlay. I'm sorry. King Street. Heard I want.
Enfield Street overlay.
Yeah, King Street over, yeah. How does the commission-
That's what we're voting on, correct?
Right. We're not voting on approving a car dealership there. We're not approving those two lots that are there.
Good.
Correct. Mrs. Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the, the, the layout that we received, um, today. Um, for compliance with section eight point six zero, King Street, Enfield Street Design Overlay District that the improvements made are in conformance with the requirements of section eight point six zero. And that the, um, applicant has shown a, a desire to improve that, you know, the presentability of the site to the town, you know, and, and the, the residents and the adjacent, you know, I guess landowners that, you know, they are parcel.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Roll. Any comments before we vote?
Just one comment that we put in the, uh, conditions that bollards be put around the, uh, gas connection.
And I'll, I'll amend my, um, proposal to include that.
Okay. Motion as amended.
Second. Jenny, do you second that? Jenny, where'd you go?
Muted.
Yes. Okay. Motion is made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Um, Virginia Higley.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
John Petronella.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
All in favor, none against. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Good luck.
You very much.
Okay. Site plan review SPR eighteen forty-seven Ten Hazard Avenue.
Hi, are you waiting for me to speak? This is Darcy Roy.
No, I'm waiting for Rich.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't think we take, oh, roll call. I'm sorry. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
There.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Francis Alamo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here. I'm sorry, I dazed off.
Don't worry. This is the site plan review application to allow freestanding monument sign associated with already approved Chase Bank Facility Equity One. Now, is there anybody here for the applicant? If so, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Darcy Roy. My address is seven Burning Tree Lane in Wallingford, Connecticut, zero six four nine two.
Welcome, Darcy. Is there anybody else with you this evening?
There is not.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
Okay, so, um, we seek to, um, get approval to install a new three foot by nine foot six, which is about twenty-eight point five square foot per side. Um, illuminated ground sign. Just the letters and the logo will illuminate. The background is gonna be okay. I'm sorry, aluminum. And it's gonna stand about six foot overall height. Um, the base of the sign will be constructed of brick to match the building that's already been approved. Um, the sign itself, as I said, will be constructed of aluminum with one foot two inch LED illuminated Chase letters. Um, the faces of the letters will be white acrylic and the returns will be a blue acrylic. Uh, there'll also be a Chase octagon logo, which is gonna be a little bit bigger than the Chase lettering. That's also going to be illuminated with LED lighting through translucent blue faces. Um, the, I, I submitted a site plan. I'm not sure if I need to share on this or if you already have these drawings. Um, I've never shared before on a, on a call like this, so not sure how to do that. Um, anyway, per the site plan that was submitted, the new ground sign will sit about eighteen foot off of the front property line on Hazard Ave and about thirty-six feet off the side property line on Freshwater Boulevard. Um, the size and the location, uh, meets the town regulations set forth in table ten point three point five. Um, the, the bank is gonna be set back quite a distance from Hazard Ave and on a corner that's got a lot of shrubbery and trees and such. And we just feel that the addition of this low pri- profile sign um, will not create a visual obstruction to traffic and instead it will um, give motorists sufficient time to locate the bank and aid them in moving over several lanes of traffic in a safe manner. Um, does anybody have any questions? I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
Is, is this a freestanding sign or attached to the building?
No, it's freestanding. Should I try to share my file?
Yeah, if you could, cause what I'm looking at, I'm on DRC page ten.
I don't know what that is.
Install a new two foot by seven and a half foot by fourteen foot and a half illuminated wall sign on the west elevation.
Nope.
Um, he included everything in the packet, um, that was submitted, um, to us under this application. That was part of it. So it was kind of for informational, but the attached signs on the building are handled administratively in the office. Um, and those, I believe, have already been approved by the zoning enforcement officer. So there's a requirement for monument signs to come before the commission for approval.
The smaller, uh, set of plans, smaller set of plans.
I'm sorry, I did not realize that you got the whole set. Um, yes, I, I've already gone through the zoning process for the wall signs. If you want, I can discuss them.
Uh, nope.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I see it now. Three foot by nine-six.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So it's not overly large. It's not blaring, you know, just the letters are gonna illuminate. It's tasteful. Um, it, you know, it meets the regulations. There's not another sign within the, I can't remember how many feet, um, a hundred and twenty-five feet to another freestanding sign. Um, so.
Cause basically this is on a corner and you're-
It is.
Is, you know, a quarter of a mile up the road.
Yeah.
All right. That, that, that's where I think the disconnect occurs.
Okay, so, um, I'm trying to find it now, but um, Lori or Jen, do they see the signage for the property?
No, they do not. Actually, I have a plan that Rick put together where he did all of the calculations for the entire plaza. But for monument signs, it's really, um, building and well signage is based on the building. And since this is a separate building from the rest plaza, um, they have their own signage package basically. And, um, the requirement for monument, freestanding monument signs is just that they can't be more than thirty-two square feet on each side. So.
So they meet all the regulations. Okay. Can I ask why we didn't administratively approve this?
It's just what it says in the zoning regulations that it requires a site plan review by the commission, cause it's type C. But, um, hopefully maybe we can look into that with the zoning update.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Higley? Thank you, Jen. You're muted. You're, you're muted. There you go.
No, I'm not. Chad, did you mute me?
I just unmuted you.
Now you're not.
Okay. Okay. Observation, when it's a new building, the applicant can provide the commission with the entire sign package and it can be approved when they're, get their approval for their building. Saves them chance, you know, another time coming in. And it doesn't have to worry, you don't have to worry about the regulations. It's only for new buildings. I'm done.
Okay. Um, anybody else? How would you guys like to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna vote. That we a- approve the site plan review for eighteen forty-seven Ten Hazard Avenue um, for a freestanding monument sign associated with the Chase Bank facility.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is being seconded. Roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Uh, Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
John Petronella. John Petronella.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, other business, I don't see any. Nothing, Jen? Okay, correspondence. Hey, Connecticut Federation Planning and Zoning Agencies Quarterly Newsletter.
Yes, we did receive the quarterly newsletter and. We made sure we sent it out to you. This is the federation that usually hosts the annual. It's a meeting and also a dinner. I think it's usually at the Aquaterp. They're not doing that again this year. But they will be doing other. I believe webinar trainings on various topics, so when we know what those are, we will let you know.
That's it. Thank you. Connecticut Land Use Law and Municipal Land Use Agencies.
Yeah, so we've given this to you for a while now, maybe a couple of meetings, so. Tonight, if you haven't signed up and you would like to, please let us know because we are cutting the check tomorrow. So. Last chance, and if you want the book. It's the same cost as signing up for the session and getting the book, so. If you want the book, we'll sign you up as well. And then if you just want to chime in for part of the meeting, you could do that, so. Please let us know if not tonight, but by tomorrow morning first thing.
I'll go with that. At least I can get the book, and if I can chime in, I'll do it.
What do they send books to you, Lori or Jen?
That's my guess is that they'll send them to the town hall. They're pretty big. They're like a couple inches thick usually.
Okay.
And it covers.
Sorry, Jen, go ahead.
It covers a lot of topics, a lot of different land use. Pretty much everything that you could deal with it covers, and it has a lot of case law in there. For reference and. It just has a lot of information. I have mine from a couple of years ago and it's really helped.
Do they send you updates like every two days?
You're so funny.
Not that, not from them, but we do get, we do get updates from CASIO on things when they come out and through CCAPA, so.
I did see the program and the agenda scheduled, so you're saying that if there's something topic of interest on there. You know, to click on at that specific time to hear that presentation.
Correct.
Throughout the day.
Yeah, pretty much what they do is they go through the book and it's a lot of just a number of attorneys who present on all these topics.
I did see the schedule, yes.
Yeah.
It is very informative.
So you'll be sending a link with that?
Yeah, we will.
Thank you.
Okay, sign me up also, please, Lori.
And Lori, did I sign up for, is that the one I signed up for too already? I can't remember, I signed up for one of them.
I think I seen your name on there, Ben.
All right.
But I'll put your name down just in case and we'll sign you up if.
I did, that was the bar one, the bar.
Yeah, yeah, Connecticut Bar.
I think it's Nicole, is it Nicole in your office?
Nicole Maroka.
She sent out a list of people who have already signed up.
Saturday, like seven or eight hours long or something.
Right.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah.
Usually it's at Wesleyan and you're in a big auditorium and then they have actually a pretty nice boxed lunch, but. Not this year.
We could pick the topic.
So we got Frank, Ken and Vinnie. Is that right, Frank, Ken and Vinnie?
Yeah, I think I signed up already.
You know, I might want the manual. I'm not sure that I'll attend the actual presentation, but the manual sounds.
Right, I agree.
Okay.
Very helpful to have.
Perfect.
Okay.
I cut a bigger check.
Next, Commissioners Correspondence.
I have something.
Go ahead, Commissioner Alamo.
Um. On the envelopes. Like before, it says to return it for further future use, like we did, we used to leave them at the council chambers. Is there a drop box somewhere for these? I know we're not supposed to go in the town hall.
Yes, and actually, our secretary had asked that I ask you to bring them back, so.
It's written on here in big letters.
We're running low on them and there is a box in the foyer if you go in through the front of town hall. There is a box in there that's labeled planning and zoning, so if, when you're driving around town, if you're near town hall, if you can just. Drop what you have back to us because we are running a little low.
Yeah, it seemed like you really wanted it back with the size of those.
Yeah, Mitch, you put the line like five foot.
Yeah, that was Pam.
If you really don't want to walk up to the town hall, you could always go to Enfield Express and just say, please send this to planning.
Put it right in the window.
Two, I didn't know where to bring them to either. Now I know, I've saved them all, so you know.
Yeah, no, we do reuse them. They're expensive.
We want to save the town money. We want to be good with our tax spenders, tax money spent wisely.
I think I just had mine dropped off this past week. You must have had a whole new package of them.
I know, there was a bag sitting in planning and zoning today, just all of them. I don't know where it came from.
I think it came from my. It was in my way. I needed to get them out of there.
Is that it? Anybody else? John, you've been awful quiet this meeting.
I'm good, thanks.
Alrighty. Okay, moving on. Director of Development Services report.
We are going to, actually, I'm going to try to send something out tomorrow. The, Jen and I spoke with Don Poland, so we're going to try to start our POCD steering committee starting March seventeenth. So. We thought about the fact that, you know, we're in a pandemic, so most people aren't probably going to go out to the bars that night, so. But it is St. Patty's Day.
Were you able to get a farmer?
No, we'll talk about that. I'll call you on that.
Okay.
Okay. And. And the consultant actually wants to come to the next meeting if it's not too packed. And we are accepting a couple of applications, but I think there might be some time for him. He doesn't want a lot of time.
Who?
Our consultant, Don Poland.
Okay.
He was wondering if he comes to the next meeting. We're going to stop the survey at the end of the month, so we're going to put out a public notice to that effect, so people will get another, you know, thought, hey, maybe I've got to do that now because I've been putting it off. Let's see. Dealing with a lot of legal issues lately. Working on some brownfield grants, well, mostly Nelson is, but. We're working on some brownfield grants towards getting the Strand and La Mania assessed and also perhaps the Levins property. For TOD. So.
Good.
That's, that's. That's it for now. I've had a meeting every night this week.
Did the Enfield Square sell again?
The Enfield Square is in the process of trying to sell the parcels that they subdivided. So they're not trying to sell the mall itself. They're trying to sell parcels.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Administrative Approval Report.
Yes, so we have one administrative approval that. We approved in the office for a playground associated with Saint Barnard School. On Pearl Street in Thompsonville. Again, just a playground.
Good, great, thank you. Any other administrative approvals that may be coming up we can hope for?
I don't have any off the top of my head, but we have been working with a lot of people. We've been very, very busy. Doing a lot of pre-application assistance, so we have a lot of stuff. We have a few actual applications pending in the office now that we've received. Which I've listed one of them on applications to be received. But we will have a lot of stuff coming through.
So hopefully, we have a busy summer.
Probably.
Good. Okay, thank you, Jen. Moving on, Applications to be Received.
Yep, so. I forget what we already listed on the agenda.
Chicago Sams.
Chicago Sams, okay, yes, we are working with Chicago Sams. They filed their application for a permanent outdoor dining patio, exactly where their current. Temporary COVID outdoor dining patio is. I think they want to expand the sidewalk a little bit more to accommodate it a little better, but. There's just a few missing pieces of information from the applicant that we're waiting on, and then we'll get it on the agenda before you. We also have an application for. A new building at. One twenty-eight, I think it's Moody Road. And actually, the applicant is here. He wanted to see the meeting before he goes forward at the. Probably the February twenty-eighth meeting, so. That's pending. I think it's one twenty-eight Moody Road. And then we have two pending text amendment applications, one for a Winters Farmers Market and one for the Lake Districts. So we're sending those out for review from the Capital Region Council of Governments and we'll get them for you as well.
Thanks, Jen. That's all.
For the moment.
Need more?
Nope.
Can I ask Jennifer a question?
Sure.
On that. Chicago Sams, I thought you said it was going in front? So you're saying you're thinking of putting it in front?
Yeah, that's where their current.
Right.
Outdoor dining is for COVID.
That extends a little bit out into the roadway, doesn't it?
I don't want to get into this right now.
No, I just know, it does currently both. Mike, here's my point. And you said there's some missing pieces?
We know it's an application to be received. We shouldn't be discussing it.
I'm not going to discuss the application. Okay, you said there were some pieces missing. Can you please make sure that we have public safety comments?
Yes.
All town staff or all town departments?
Especially public safety in my eyes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Opportunities and Resolved Issues Discussion, Combining Planning and Zoning and the Inland Wetlands Commission. I had a conversation with the mayor. We should be on the agenda in March to discuss it. Both Commissions are short members right now and. You know, when it happens. If the commission wants to go, I'll let you know when it is. And any concerns or questions you want to discuss, I mean, maybe. You know, Rich or, you know, Jenny, if you'd like to attend to, you know, so it's not a political move. We'll move forward, but when I find out the date, I'll let you guys know. Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Lori?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Can Lori do that?
No, I just did.
Get out of here.
I think we should stay ten minutes longer because Lori.
Hey, stop. I made the motion. Somebody sacking it, quick.
Vinnie's muted, so her second doesn't count, so. We don't have a second, we're here.
There you go, Jenny. Say it. You're unmuted.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
At nine oh five, thank you.